The Urban Renewal Agency's work session to order. If the recorder would at least call a roll.
Board member Kazer.
President.
Board member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board member Nanki, absent. Board member Leong, absent. Board member Asik, absent. Board member Hoy.
Not absent.
Board member Cook.
Not absent.
Board member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I don't see any additions or deletions, so we'll go right into our discussion. We'll begin with the Downtown Streetscape, Kristen Rutherford.
Thank you. I'm Kristen Rutherford. I am the city's Urban Development Director. The Urban Development Department has two work sessions tonight. We will first conduct the Downtown Streetscape work session under the Urban Renewal Agency Board, then looking at the visitors that are here for a completely different topic. As soon as we complete this work session, then we will move on to the work session for the homeless task force implementation plan. So we will close out of urban renewal and then start the City Council work session.
Would you prefer if we switch that?
Well, we have the consultants here as well.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So we'd like to get them back on the road, back to Portland.
Okay, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, beginning with the Streetscape Plan work session, I would first like to give a little bit of background as to how we ended up focusing on this project. So about three years ago, when I started with the city, we were in the process of looking at paying, retiring our debt for the convention center and having additional bonding capacity. And we also had an action plan for the downtown urban renewal area that was from 2011. So we'd come out of the recession, we'd had a number of changes, and some of those projects had already occurred and been implemented. And so I wanted to revisit community priorities before we started budgeting future funds after we retired this convention center debt. So we convened a series of focus groups. We held 12 different meetings that involved a wide range of community members to look at the projects that are in that action plan and share with us their priorities and vision for downtown. And the number one project that came out of that effort was Downtown Streetscape and a desire to create some placemaking downtown and to soften the downtown and to kind of create an environment that was more conducive to lingering and hanging out and where you'd feel comfortable with your children. So coming out of that effort, we then budgeted and moved forward with the Streetscape project and brought on a consultant team. So what we have for you tonight is not what we'll call like the ultimate plan. We're doing this in a phased approach. What we're going to talk about tonight is sort of the foundational piece, some base concepts. As we have spent the last year working on this and getting additional public input, there have been a few different things that have been going on. We have new development that's occurring downtown, so we want to have base concepts that we can adopt sooner than later so that as this new development occurs, they can be implementing this foundational piece. Then the second piece that we will come back and work on after we've adopted this foundational piece is street furnishings. We want to spend a little bit more time on street furnishings, layer that on top of the foundation because we want to make sure that we are, that we're going to be installing furnishings that will stand the test of time, that are going to be easy to maintain, that aren't going to create more problems than they're solving, that sort of thing. And then the third piece of this that we will all work on into the future are a couple of different elements that came out of the design process and through public input but which have been a little bit contentious. So, because they involved going into parking spaces. So the Streetscape concept is really from the curb to the front of the building, not into the roads. So we have a couple of areas where we're looking at options that would go into parking spaces and take some softening and greenery and landscaping out into parking spaces. But then we run into the conflict of demand for parking and the trade-off for the softening and some traffic calming. So we want to explore that further, and we plan on a pilot project where we will, if we can get a landscaper under contract, we ran into a challenge trying to do this last year because everybody's really busy right now. We want to bring in some landscaping and soil and take parking spaces offline for a month or maybe two months and test it out and not invest in the permanent solution, but put it out there and let people experience it and see what the feedback is from the trade-off from giving up parking in exchange for the additional greenery. So that will be an additional phase as well. So the focus tonight then is just on that, the base concepts between the curb to the building face. The consultants will walk us through this, and then we will stop afterwards and answer any questions you may have about the actual implementation and next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Cherie, actually. I'd like, I'd like Cherie to come up because she has shepherded this, I'm surprising her. I would like her to introduce her consultant team because she has spent a very large percentage of her time over the last year working with this team and with the public to get some good input. Sorry.
Good evening. Cherie Worgren, Downtown Revitalization Manager. Walker Macy, Ken and Morgan will be here to go through the Streetscape concept with you this evening, but in addition, I just want to thank public work staff and some team members that I have and Kristen, who have been instrumental. It's taken quite a while, lots of meetings, lots of public outreach, gathering information, and part of Walker Macy's team included Kristen, who also helped us with outreach and helped us at the public meetings. But just special thanks to Michael Miller and Kevin Hotman and a lot of public work staff who were very supportive through this process.
No, it's the other one.
It's the other one.
It's a bunch of light.
All right. Thank you, Chair and Board members. My name's Ken Perry. I'm a principal with Walker Macy. We're landscape architects and planners in Portland, and I'm joined with my colleague Morgan Maoli. Morgan's an urban designer with us. So it's an honor to be here tonight to present our Downtown Streetscape Plan. As Cherie and Kristen mentioned, we've been working since fall of 2017 on this plan. It's been a very enjoyable process, working with the people of Salem and with the city team, just sharing their vision for downtown and helping them craft a refinement to that vision. We also wanted to thank city staff, especially Kristen and Cherie. Cherie has been a great and supportive project manager and collaborator throughout the process. So as Kristen also mentioned, in previous work and talking to the community, there was a lot of support for Streetscape improvements as a catalyst for property upgrades and redevelopment, as well as just the encouraging of a more vibrant, active Downtown Streetscape. So what we'd like to do is walk through some highlights from our report. You all have a copy of our report, and so we're going to present select pages from that report, just to give you a sort of a high-level overview. So as, when we started the process, we really wanted to get an understanding of downtown Salem. It was really important for us to do a deep dive into existing conditions. There was a lot of existing information available, but we wanted to do our own analysis. In the back of your report, there's detailed appendix that includes a lot of our maps and diagrams and understanding of that. But here's some of the sort of high points about our analysis of downtown. So just to start, there's some really delightful streets in downtown Salem. It's, you know, the combination of historic buildings and beautiful big trees and thriving businesses and places to eat and gather makes for a really delightful downtown. So we were looking for ways to build on that and strengthening that. We noticed there is an older generation of Streetscape improvements, as shown in the image in the top right, with this older sort of tile that's proven to be difficult to maintain and replace. In some cases, you've been replacing, the city's been replacing these with new, just nice, clean, concrete bullbouts. And our project doesn't propose to change those at all. Those recent improvements will remain, but we're looking at places where those improvements haven't happened, sort of slowly and incrementally changing out some of this tile. That's one example of something that we noticed. We also looked at the tree canopy downtown. There's a lot of great trees downtown, but there's a lot of places where they don't have room to thrive or the wrong species has been planted. So there's a lot of opportunities to really build that tree canopy, fill it out. There's places where there aren't any trees at all, so obviously great opportunities there. And that was a key thing that was expressed by people that came to our meetings. They wanted to see more greenery and more trees downtown. There's, as I mentioned, a lot of really vibrant areas downtown, and we want to build on that. We know there's areas that are maybe struggling a little bit, so could benefit from the catalytic aspects of Streetscape improvements. So you're just sort of taking that important core and growing that energy. We also noticed that there's more and more events downtown, some really great things happening in alleys and other places like Go Nuts Downtown or the First Wednesday. So we planned our Streetscape improvements around allowing for these events to continue to happen and to make them even easier. And then maybe most importantly, looking at downtown, there's a lot of great things surrounding downtown. Riverfront Park, Willamette University, the Capitol Mall, the heart of Oregon's government. How could our Streetscape improvements better connect to these amenities, better highlight them, and just better integrate with all these great things about downtown Salem? So as Cherie mentioned, we had what we thought was a really rewarding public process with incredible feedback. We had more than 1,200 people engage in some form throughout the process. This included four open houses that we held, they were all held at chariots. We also did some walking tours. We did some very focused, small group sessions in the library over two days that focused on specific topics like street trees or public art and things like that. Our first open house was November 30th, and we spread out a large piece of butcher paper on the wall and just asked people to list their ideas and concerns, and we loved the results as people just jumped in there and drew and scribbled on their ideas. There was also a pretty robust online open house participation, and hundreds of people gave us comments that way as well, as well as just indirectly through city staff. So some of the messages that we heard, there was some, there was a lot of input, but there was really quite a lot of consistency, and we listed the 14 big ideas that people expressed us. And just as an example, people were really wanting to prioritize the safety and comfort and the experience for pedestrians. They really wanted to clear off any obstructions that there were, to clear walking pathways. They wanted to make this a place for all ages and to make this welcoming for children, too. They didn't feel like it was currently. Obviously, I mentioned greenery and softness, bringing in more plants and more trees and making this feel like you are at the heart of the Willamette Valley. How can that be expressed in Streetscape? I talked about connections. People were really interested in that idea. People like the public art that's been installed downtown, and they want to see more of it. They want, they like the signage and wayfinding that's been installed recently, and they want to see more of it. So we just wanted to sort of build on existing successes that have been seen at the city. And these are a selection of quotes on the right that we pulled out. So through all this input, we found that there was four key guiding recommendations that could sort of guide our subsequent work. These guiding recommendations start with the big idea of knitting downtown together, and that means providing things like a consistent but diverse tree canopy. So stitching together places that don't have trees to make it feel more cohesive, providing that clear, unobstructed walking zone for pedestrians, and just providing consistency. People felt like you could walk from one block to another, and it doesn't feel like it's the same place. So how can we achieve that? The other big guiding recommendation was to celebrate the landscape. I mentioned that this sort of feeling like you're at the heart of the Willamette Valley, why not celebrate that and create this real green and place-specific environment? Add more planting, add more trees. Part of this was to also brighten downtown and encourage people to come downtown later into the evening with more lighting, including seasonal lighting. The third big idea was what I mentioned about the existing wayfinding and public art. Build on that and strengthen that. Identify more spaces for public art. And then the final guiding recommendation was to recognize what a lot of people wanted was to gather and linger downtown, spend time together, maybe sit together on the street. They didn't feel like there was enough spaces for that. So how could our plan establish and support social spaces? So through our plan, Morgan's going to present the details, but you'll see that there are consistent design elements throughout. So for example, every street has provisions for more trees, more room for trees, more planting at the base of trees and in other places, just more areas for soil to help the existing trees and future trees thrive, as well as infrastructure to water those trees, as well as to power new and existing lighting so that we can have consistent, well-lit downtown. And the diagrams on the bottom express another element of consistency and simplicity. So in every Streetscape type that we're proposing, there's a consistent furnishing/planting zone next to the curb. There's also always going to be a six-foot pedestrian zone for people to walk in all streets. Morgan will describe how there's different sidewalk widths in different places, but we can always achieve that. In the widest sidewalks, there's areas for frontage zone, which is where you might see seating next to cafes or a place for a store to present things they're selling outside in nicer weather. And finally, in every Streetscape, we've tried to accommodate some social seating arrangements. So through our analysis of downtown, we also realized that it's not a one-size-fits-all type of approach because there's a lot of different street types. There's sometimes subtle differences, but it was important to recognize the different characteristics, and so we've tailored our proposals according to this set of five different street types. So Morgan's going to walk you through each of those five types and what we're recommending.
The first urban Streetscape design applies to most of the streets in downtown, and this is the baseline Streetscape design. It has all of the elements that Ken mentioned. So in the center of the drawing, you'll see the six-foot pedestrian zone that's consistent. Between that and the road, we have a furnishing and planting zone. We've recommended that the plantings around trees are not grates, but are planted with some shrubs or grasses to soften the urban environment. And key to this design of the furnishing and planting zone is that where it's not planted and it's paved, the pavement is a darker color so that as we're locating our bike racks, our lights, our benches, it's very clear where that zone is and that it's not impeding the clear pedestrian zone. And then finally, as there's extra space, we have a frontage zone for business use.
Could I just, I hate to interrupt you, but...
Of course.
Does this relate then to this urban promenade civic? Are these the types? Am I understanding that?
That's correct.
Could you call, would you mind just calling those out as you do that? Like, was that the urban zone?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
This is the urban Streetscape design type, absolutely. So the next type that I'll go over is the promenade Streetscape design type, and this is the design that we applied to Liberty Street. It's very similar to the urban Streetscape design. It has all of the same elements, a pedestrian zone, a furnishing and planting zone, a frontage zone, the tree wells are planted. The major difference about the promenade Streetscape is that it has a nine-foot wide pedestrian zone. It's extra wide, and we did this for two reasons. One is that many of the sidewalks on Liberty are already fairly wide, and that gave us the opportunity to provide a walking space that's broader and more comfortable for larger groups of people to walk and stroll. That's why we called it the promenade Streetscape. The second reason we suggested we design it in this way was that during public engagement, a lot of the people said that their primary favorite places to gather in the downtown were all across streets on Liberty Street. There were State, Court, and Schmeckada. And so we wanted to provide a Streetscape design that was tailored to provide space for these groups moving between these destinations. The third Streetscape design type is the civic Streetscape, and the key objective of the Streetscape design was to provide a connection between major civic amenities, which is why we call it the civic Streetscape. It's connecting between the Riverfront Park to the west and the Capitol and Willamette University to the east. And one of the most valuable aspects of a Streetscape is that it can provide intuitive wayfinding. It cues people that activity continues by providing an unbroken line of trees and similar One element of this Streetscape that's worth noting is that the plan on the bottom of this image shows two different types of trees, and as we're designing some of these Streetscapes, you might want to select more columnar narrow trees if there's a historic building behind them to preserve views to that building or business signage. And then it shows at the corners broader canopy trees, which might make more sense there as they wouldn't block a building and there might be more space for them to grow and thrive. So we have various trees available for all of these Streetscape designs, and they're flexible to accommodate those types. On the civic Streetscapes, because we really want to prioritize the wayfinding between these major destinations, we wanted to consider the vertical elements, the trees, because those are especially valuable in wayfinding. And in the civic Streetscapes, we've identified broad canopy trees that would frame the views between these destinations and have bright fall color. The Parkway Streetscape was identified as being slightly different because we found that the uses along Union to the north and Church Street to the east were a little bit different. This was a transition zone between more urban uses and more civic uses and residential uses. So while there wasn't a need in these locations for as much cafe dining, there was more need for buffering people from streets, and we could create a lush environment with some of that space. We also found that these sidewalks tended to be fairly wide, some as wide as 30 feet. So we have our six-foot pedestrian zone in the center, and then we allocated some of that extra space to even wider planting zones so we can support some really nice big trees. You'll also notice on the far left of the image, there's a vehicle clearance zone. This provides the ability for people to open their car doors and step out onto a hardscape surface instead of into a planter. You won't see that very often in an urban environment where you might want to reallocate that space for cafe dining or a wider pedestrian zone, but on these streets that aren't quite as busy, that can be a really nice thing to have. And the final Streetscape type is the Front Street Streetscape. We gave this its own type because Front Street is very unique in that it's an ODOT-owned highway, and it's a very important street because it connects the downtown to the Riverfront Park. It's very similar in its design to Parkway. It has a six-foot pedestrian zone and a fairly wide planting zone to buffer people from that more busy street, but there's no parking on Front, so you won't see that vehicle clearance And then finally, alleys are one of the most unique and wonderful aspects of Salem as a city. The city makes really great use of alleys for events and for art, for businesses, and so their design was really integral to our Streetscape design plan. We looked at the entrances of alleys in the Streetscape Plan, and we think that one of the most important things that we can do is extend the pedestrian walking surface across the entry to an alley. Right now, it's usually an asphalt drive aisle, just comment, but by extending the pedestrian walking surface across the front of the alley, it cues everyone, drivers and pedestrians, that this is a pedestrian priority zone and increases safety for people walking across that entrance. We extended all of the benefits of the Streetscape designs to the alleys, the planting and the softening. We thought that these were great areas for some of those communal seating arrangements where people can face each other and have a conversation. We were lucky in that a lot of the alleys front onto streets that have 45-degree angle parking, and there's some excess asphalt in the triangles left over by that, and we can use that to plant and create a buffer around Streetscape seating. That can be especially nice for some of our more vulnerable urban users, like children, to make them feel, to make their parents especially, feel more safe. We know that there's an alley naming project going on right now, as well as a project to contribute those names and historic names of the alleys somewhere into the urban environment. And we proposed in this project that those might be well-suited to strips as you enter the alley entrance that act as a threshold for people to know the name of that alley. Those are the broad Streetscape design concepts. When you get into the guidelines section of the report, it goes into more detail about how these might be achieved in real-world conditions. And one of the important things in this section that we wanted to go over was how to achieve a consistent Streetscape across all of the varying sidewalk widths in downtown Salem. So we have an example up on the screen of Court and State Street, and you'll see in the blue, those are sidewalks that are 15 feet and larger, so most of them are 15 feet and larger. There's a handful that are between 13 and 14 feet wide and a couple just half blocks that are 12 feet and less. So within this project, we're not exploring moving the curb. We're using the sidewalk width as it is. So I'll start with the narrowest Streetscape at 12 feet or less. What we do in the Streetscape design standard is to first prioritize the pedestrian zone at six feet. That's always a continuous element. Then after that, we prioritize the furnishing, or the planting and furnishing zone, and that can almost always achieve a six-foot width as well. On our narrowest street, around 11 feet, it might need to be five, which is still generous and can support healthy plants. And then on this design, we wouldn't have any frontage zone. And if businesses needed to put cafe dining somewhere, they could share the furnishing and planting zone. If a sidewalk is 13 to 14 feet, again, we prioritize the pedestrian zone, that's consistent. Then the furnishing and planting zone, and you get about one to two feet for business use. And finally, on the majority of the sidewalks in this example, we have the six-foot pedestrian zone, the six-foot planting and furnishing zone, and you get around three to eight feet for cafe dining or business use. The thing to note is that the pedestrian zone is always consistent, and the furnishing and planting zone is almost entirely always consistent, and it ties those together. Our goals for the landscape were really set by the community. We heard very strongly that there was a desire to soften the downtown and to relate it to its place in the Willamette River Valley. So this translated to a list of plant palette that was lush, low-maintenance, and fairly colorful. We're looking at plants that can be trimmed once a year and survive on drip irrigation, but that will provide a lot of visual interest to the urban environment. And we have a specific list of trees derived from the city's street tree list with some suggested trees specific to the civic Streetscapes that might provide some fall color. I'll hand it back over to Ken now, who will talk about how all of these things come together in an example plan.
Thank you. So we think our plan is simple, and it's going to be easy to implement, either in a larger series of blocks or incrementally, one block by one block, or even opportunistically when an adjacent property redevelops with an apartment building, for example, or a new office. But we wanted to show you one example of the implementation of the plan, just to give you a sense of some of the details that are involved. So in this example, we're looking at the south side of Court Street between Commercial and Front. You might recognize the new apartment building on the right side, so this is across the street from there. There are some beautiful trees there now. They kind of have low branches. There's some angled parking, and it's close to one of those crosswalks over to Riverfront Park. So the top diagram just expresses what's there now. There's a total of nine trees. There's a beautiful historic building on the right, or sort of the eastern half of that block. So that has the narrowest sidewalk probably in downtown, and that's probably a function of that historic building over time. But what we're showing in the proposed plan, which is the diagram below, is that you can build on those existing trees, and you can maintain that number and even grow it to, say, 10 trees, as we're showing in this example, but there's a lot of flexibility. You could retain those existing trees if the community cherishes those or if the existing, the adjacent property wants to keep them. You could, if you found that some of them weren't thriving as well, you could replace some with better examples in more room to grow. Or you could, as we're showing on the right-hand side, those trees in front of those historic buildings are not really thriving, so with this example, we're providing more room for them to grow and really create more of a canopy on the street. What this also shows, on the east half of this block, the sidewalk again is only 12 feet. On the, on the west side of the block, it's a little wider, 13 and a half feet. But what you're seeing through the score pattern is that there's always that consistent pedestrian walking zone. And then as you cross the alley, you could jog... And then as you cross the alley, you could jog to maintain that consistent walking zone, but often there may not be a use that's using the frontage zone. So it just becomes a nice wider sidewalk. We're also illustrating how this is a great example of where you could implement one of those alley entrance landscape projects. And there's also some more subtle improvements that will come about through this, which is enhancing the ADA accessibility of downtown, filling in curb bumpouts and ramps throughout the downtown. So Kristin mentioned there was a number of future projects for consideration. We've heard a lot of support. We also heard some concerns. So we wanted to include them in the plan and just emphasize that these are for further discussion. One example is that on the wide streets, Commercial and Liberty, that there's a lot of areas where there's some excess asphalt and there was community interest in perhaps feeling like they'd like to reduce the perceived width of those streets. This is an example, looking down Commercial Street, you can see how people would express that feeling. So one opportunity would be to add pockets of landscape and trees, and that really dramatically reduces the perceived width of that and would actually also serve to slow traffic down. Another example that we heard a lot of support for, and we coordinated with the team that was master planning Riverfront Park, was to really improve the connections over Front Street to the park. This will take further coordination with ODOT, of course, but we're proposing much better crosswalks that won't erode, wider, clearer, well-lit, enhance the landscape in the medians and at the corners. And as this illustration suggests, maybe paint the existing shelters a brighter color to act as this wayfinding device from, even from the Capitol, you would look down the street and see that red shelter as a beacon welcoming you to the park. We talked about the events that are happening downtown. And just to emphasize that the streetscape plan that we're proposing, a number of different streets, can accommodate future events and even temporary closure of streets for a farmer's market or a block party or something like that. And we highlighted the opportunities in these three examples. And then finally, the idea of parklets is gaining a lot of traction in a lot of towns in Oregon. There's a lot of opportunities here. You can do them on a one-day basis, you can do them on a seasonal basis, or they could be permanent. But it's going to take more outreach with adjacent property owners just to maybe assuage some concerns about parking laws. So with that, we wanted to thank you for having us here tonight. And we want to thank all the citizens of Salem for collaborating and meeting with us and offering their ideas and energy throughout the process. And again, thanks to the city team for their support and collaboration. We look forward to the discussion.
Very good. Councilor Lewis?
A couple of questions, and I don't know if I'm going to start, I have to go back to the graph, but the sidewalks that would be able to have the cafe dining, is 15 feet the minimum that we would need, or can you have dining on a sidewalk that's narrower than that?
So on the narrower sidewalks, the dining would not be in the zone closest to the building? It would be out in the zone where the furnishings would be and the landscaping is? So it could still occur, it just would be in a different location?
Okay. Dining as opposed to sitting. Do we have an inventory of how wide our sidewalks are inside the zone? Like, is there a list?
We do now. We did not at the start of this project. And that was one of the things that we discovered through this, is that there is a great deal of variation on the width of our sidewalks.
And is that in here?
I don't think it is in, is it?
So I was curious what percentage of the sidewalks are, let's say, 15 feet or wider?
I can make a guess. I'd say 60%.
Just give me a second, please.
I'm sorry. My guess would be 60 to 70% are above 15 feet, but we could absolutely look that up and do the math for you.
And on the opposite, the most narrow sidewalks, what, is that, I don't remember what it says, 6 feet is at the narrowest or?
About, within our study area.
So the lowest, let's say eight. What percentage would you say, as a guess? It's eight feet or?
It's really only on Ferry Street where you have the narrowest sidewalks. So it's just that one street and only half of that street is in the study area technically. So.
Okay. Counselor Kirk?
Thank you. I was really excited to see the traffic calming, so thank you for taking this project on. I had a couple of questions, though. As far as delivery trucks are concerned, I know with the streetscaping and access to traffic right now, depending on the time of day and the day of the week, you can get stuck behind some of those delivery trucks if you're driving through downtown. Is the plan to shuttle more of that delivery traffic into the alleyways or what is the?
This project did not look at on-street transportation or things like deliveries. So we're not anticipating any change in that regard.
Okay. And then also, as far as the bulbouts are concerned, which I know are wonderful for pedestrians and narrower crossing fields, how does this relate to active transport with bikes? Because sometimes those very bulbouts that make it safer for pedestrians to cross the street can create a barrier for those choosing to bike or use alternative transportation downtown. I know we have some bike lanes downtown, but they really don't connect too much. So if you could kind of talk about that plan?
So again, this, that, bike lanes are transportation. So we did not get into transportation elements as a part of this project. This project focused completely on the curb face to the building face and not what happens on the street.
So with the bulbouts, is it possible to have a bulbout that's not a barrier for bikes or to be, I just, I see that we're moving that project, but I don't, I want to make sure that if our project is in conflict with another project, that we're addressing that head-on.
So Kevin Hartman from Traffic Engineering is here, and I am going to turn this one over to Kevin.
Good evening. Kevin Hartman, City Traffic Engineer. The bulbouts aren't going to go beyond where the parking is, so the travel lane for bikes aren't affected because they, the parking, the bulbouts don't go beyond where the parking spaces are.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. I understand that we're not looking at the actual transportation, but I also see that Director Fernandez is here, so I'm going to say a few things that struck me about the The first one is that based on what most people said, they want to be able to park, to walk and move around with not a whole lot of, I don't know, concentration on traffic. And so I know when I'm driving and going north, not going to downtown, but going through downtown, I go on to Front Street both coming south and going north. And I'm wondering if there's any thought, Director Fernandez, as to trying to direct the traffic that is going through north and south by signage or by some other way or turn, you know, mandatory turn lanes to get to Front Street as opposed to driving through town?
Right, certainly. And that's the, Front Street was designed to do exactly that.
It's like a bypass to downtown.
It is exactly that. So, and all of our planning relates to improving the pedestrian feel on Front Street, but not limiting the fact that that is what Front Street is intended to do. There's already signage out there that sort of directs you, directs, I think, I think most people know to go around. Somebody, you know, coming from outside the city may not understand it fully.
The only thing I'm wondering is something like through traffic, use Front Street. I don't know if you have those kind of signs because.
Well, they're all ODOT signs, so we have to work with them to, to say that. But they're, the structures are certainly out there already.
Okay, good. These are just a couple other kind of general comments. And one is, is, this is outside of the study area, but I look at the Civic Center Plaza there, you know, which is just cut out of that, you know, it's at Commercial and Trade Street, I think. And that seems to be an area that is woefully underused. And so this doesn't have anything to do with downtown, but it does have something to do with downtown. And I would love to see some sort of emphasis on that. Then, this just happens to be a personal thing for me, and this relates to things that are downtown. The farmer's market is wonderful, but the painting on the surface there is this reflective white. And I know I've talked to Kristin and I think maybe Cherie about it, and it sure seems it would be good if you could paint that some other color. Maybe that's the bus people, but you go down there on a hot day and it's just popping right up and you have to wear sunglasses and it can, the temperature can really rise. So I don't know if there's some way you could do something about that. Then I have a specific question for Ken and Morgan, and that relates to the, on page 14, to the, oh, the elements that everybody liked and everybody was looking for. Is that in any kind of order?
No, that's just a list.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not.
You know, and I note that all of those, plus all of the four guiding recommendations, none of them really say anything about, we want traffic to move through this city downtown as fast as it can go and on the Peters that go. And we also see nothing about, you know, we want more parking or better parking or more convenient parking. And I presume they're not in there because they weren't really mentioned much.
Yeah, those didn't rise as major topics of.
Okay, because I note that in one of the parts you reported says, there's this conflict between people who want things to be slowed down in downtown and people who want to get through downtown as quick as they can. And it doesn't seem like it's a fair fight from what I can see from what has been recommended by people. I have some other comments, but I'm happy to let somebody else take the floor.
I'm going to follow up since you've got Fernandez warmed up.
I was only here to support Kristin. I'm happy to leave. This is really her night.
But I heard something on the discussion, I think of the urban streets, that caught my attention after 12 years of trying to convince the city that a two-way State Street, two-way Court Street. And it was that description of connection with Willamette University and the Capitol and the, can we expect that that will become part of this discussion? That's, 12 years, two blocks just doesn't make.
Yeah, I'll jump in. So this is the streetscape plan, like from the curb to the building?
Yeah.
Council should recall that there was the downtown circulation study that involved the street system. And in that plan, there is, and that plan is still operative and is, this is another, these, those, those two go together. So the two-waying of State Street, the added bicycle facilities that connects, you know, improves Union Street and connects, you know, High and Church, and all of those are still happening. This is in addition to.
Well, I want to understand, because I felt like it described an integrated system. Will those be part then? I realize it's not, you know, the defined area, but it really seemed to fit well with what they were describing as the objectives and the overall look of the downtown.
So there has been some amount of design work that has occurred about, what, a year ago, Cherie, on the two-waying piece?
That has to be incorporated in this.
Then we kind of stopped on that to wrap up this, because some of this information is informing the two-waying piece.
Okay.
So that it, and then when this is adopted, then the two-waying can move forward.
Okay. I would just hate to see us do a lot on those streets we're going to two-way that doesn't integrate well with what's going on there. And you're telling me it does?
It does, yes.
Okay. So just so it contemplates that. Very good. Counselor Kirk?
Thank you. So I recognize the streetscape portion is not the transportation portion. People requested places to linger, things to do, and it was really exciting to hear about temporary opportunities to test ideas out. But also kind of diving into what Counselor Anderson was talking about with requests for parking or this sort of idea of people don't want to linger because of one reason or another. How are we coordinating with transit or being able to provide access to people that don't live downtown to be able to participate in those events? Are we coordinating with places like Willamette if they're already living there or commuter shuttles, those kind of things? Is that a later-on project to be able to facilitate better use of downtown for people throughout the city?
So commuter shuttles are not something that we have discussed as a part of this project. That is something that was looked at in the Urban Renewal Action Plan and in, I think, in the mobility study, there was a downtown circulator that was discussed. The issue there is the funding and operation of that, because while it's identified in an urban renewal plan, it's not eligible for urban renewal funding. We can't operate something like that. And then we have the transit mall that is downtown. You know, so there are buses from around the city that come in and out of the transit mall throughout the day.
But I didn't see the transit mall in any of the pictures and I didn't hear it identified necessarily. I mean, a recognized Court Street was there, but what I saw was the destination, not the...
It's included. It's included within the boundary of the study area, yeah.
Is everything that was talked about, all of the different elements of this, is that all eligible for urban renewal funding?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes, yes.
The trees?
Not the maintenance, not the ongoing maintenance of all of this, but the construction, yes.
But the water system, the electrical system, the trees, the landscaping, all of that is eligible then to be done with urban renewal funds? If you were to add it, I don't know if there's a dollar amount associated with this, but is this a real expensive to do or how big a deal is this?
We haven't moved into design yet to develop cost estimates.
Okay.
So we're just still at.
But it'll all be eligible. That's the, and that was part of the charge then to Macy Walker?
So once concepts are adopted, then we can start moving forward with specific design and cost estimating that. And we have a couple of areas that we're looking at because of new development in those areas. And we would like to be able to partner this work with that new construction so that we're not having new buildings come in and build out, put in new sidewalks, then come back and tear it all up to do this.
Will they be required to go to 15-foot wide sidewalks then?
No.
It'll integrate into whatever the.
They will not be widening the sidewalks or basically narrowing the right-of-way. So the sidewalk widths in front of those buildings will continue to be the widths that they are.
Okay. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fernandez, back to this, trying to draw you back into this. I seem to remember a conversation you and I had some time ago, maybe over a year ago, about the protected bike lanes and the reason that we weren't able to do them to the extent you wanted to was because of the bulbouts in some of the corners. And so we did the best we could with what we had without having to tear things out. Does this kind of cement those, so to speak, into a forever, like we're going to always have those and not ever have the protected bike lanes on certain routes, or does this impact that at all?
Well, the, the, the protected bike lanes on High and Church is where we could afford to remove a travel lane and actually put in a safe place. When you move over into Liberty, we can't afford to remove any parking spaces or any travel lanes. And then parking is already, in some places, already parallel parking on the east side of the street, some places, both sides of the street. So those bulbouts are really set, you know? So that's, so on Church, on Liberty it's set. On Commercial Street, there was a recommendation in cooperation with the bicycle community that we use charos on those. So we went to three lanes from four, and the recommendation was use charos. And we reached out to the bicycle community quite a bit, and that's what they recommended. So that's what we installed. So I think we're in good shape in terms of where the bulbouts are today and how they work with ADA, given that our streets are designed with those big crowns. That's actually by design, not by extra asphalt, as we found out when we were redoing them. So what we have is, we solved the issue of bicycling in downtown by High and Church, and then we now have to make the connection to Union Street and then to the south so that people can get all the way to Busch Park and get, and can get east-west using Union Street. And then over time, I think we have some opportunities, I think on State Street, to put in bicycle facilities so that there's kind of a southern-eastwest route as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear. I wasn't suggesting that we do more like on Liberty or Commercial. I wasn't suggesting that at all. What I was trying to figure out is, will we ever get to protected bike lanes on Church and High as opposed to, you know, parts of it, we have them now where you have the curb and then the bike lane and then the parking? In some places, it's the curb, the parking, then the bike lane? Are we ever going to get that consistent all the way up and down High and Church?
Realistically, probably not. So, I mean, what we have is what we have, you know, because of, you know, kind of just really the, you know, the angle parking, you know, kind of how things exist to. just really the, you know, the angle parking, you know, kind of how things exist today, you know, we'd want to complete the system instead of going back and redoing. So, could we? Yes, realistically, probably not.
Do you have a proposed caliper of tree that when you talk about replacing trees or bringing in new trees, is there a certain size of tree that you recommend?
It would just, it would depend on the species.
Okay.
Typically, they start pretty thin because you want to establish them when they're young.
Okay.
So three to six inches is common for a young tree newly planted.
Okay.
Just gives them a chance to thrive better, and they'll grow pretty quickly.
Okay, great. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Want to give Director Fernandez another chance. And this is something that I've talked about with the Director Rutherford and with you, and I also know the Congestion Task Force has talked about it, and that is, that relates to one of the recommendations, which is the crossing at Court Street to the park. Because based on the recommendations of the Congestion Task Force, one of the recommendations is to shut down the, at least the north end of the crossing, and I would hope maybe even both crossings on State Street, excuse me, Court Street, and have the entrance to the park be on State Street because of the problem with people coming off the ramp from the bridge, coming eastbound, trying to go southbound. Anytime anybody pushes that light, it backs traffic, has potential to back traffic all the way up to the bridge. So I'm just interested in how we're going to integrate that, because to me, cutting off the park, the sidewalk, or the crossings there would have, wouldn't cost much for us, but would have a potentially large effect on traffic trying to go south, gets backed up for three minutes or however long it takes before somebody presses the button.
Okay.
So, so the, let me, I'll give it a shot first, Kristin. So, so on the southbound side, we really wouldn't gain anything by removing that crosswalk because, you know, you've got to stop at State Street anyway, so, so I wouldn't recommend that. The thing that we talked a lot about was on the northbound side, the north crosswalk on Court Street. You know, I think the solution there is perhaps limiting those crossings during peak hour, especially at the PM peak hour. We've attempted to experiment with that. ODOT isn't real keen on it. It's a, it's an ODOT facility, but that's what we'd want to reach out to ODOT and not just get rid of it 24 hours a day, but really see if we could limit crossings or put up a sign or not have it activate during, during the peak hour.
Sure.
And it's not an easy thing to do, because we've talked to ODOT about it.
Nothing is easy to do, we're discovering.
We wouldn't move forward with those crossing improvements in isolation.
Okay.
Counselor Kaser.
Thanks. Just wanted to say that I really like this plan, so thank you for your work on it. And some of the things I jotted down that I like about it is it's consistent throughout the whole downtown, which we definitely need. Our downtown's old, it's developed over time and its own character on each block. But I think that the plan is, in a lot of ways, it's really simple, but that's good too, because it's flexible in that way. I like that we differentiated the streetscape types, because we do have really different types of streets downtown, so I think it's good to have those applications on different types of streets. I think our alleys are one of our most underutilized assets in downtown. I think they've been getting more traction as we have businesses open and people are just more interested in them. So I really like the idea of having these alley entrances and really inviting people into that and making it like this is a pedestrian space. Yes, we have deliveries and traffic and stuff, but it's really like focused for you to just walk through and really engage with other people. So I really like the idea of naming the alleys and actually, you know, people referring to them by, you know, I'm going to be at the, I don't know, whatever it is, the arts building alley or whatever it might be, but I think that's a really, really neat thing. I'm curious about, and the other thing I really like is the mid-block landscaping. I think it helps with that, the traffic calming, because we want our, you know, I think we want our traffic to continue moving, but we don't want people to feel like it's a freeway because they're, they have three lanes there. We still want them to recognize, like, you're in downtown, there's a lot of people, you should, you know, be aware that people can be crossing the street or riding their bike or kids can be darting out possibly, so, you know, just be aware that you need to slow down. And I think some of those pieces can help calm without removing the width for a travel lane and that sort of thing. So I'm curious about recommendations for implementation. That might be a further discussion, just as far as, you know, what you would recommend. I like the idea of the zones, actually, you have your, because right now we have a mix. We have some tables are near parking, some tables are against the building, and then you have servers that are trying to cross like the sidewalk and for food and, you know, that kind of stuff. So having consistent zones and you just know like, hey, there's going to be dining and stuff over here, and there's going to be people walking over here. So I'm just curious about what the plan might be for, how do we actually do that or start to establish that even now, kind of those zones?
So next steps would be first to move forward with adoption of the space concept, and then we could move forward with the work on mid-block crossings and also with the furnishings. Then we would start design work, and we have a couple of areas in our downtown that we'd be looking at as sort of our initial pilot projects to implement this around where the new hotel is going in and where the new apartments are going in on State Street and Commercial. So that's the first area we're looking at targeting. We've had some conversations with the property owners, Scott Cycle, the Den Bar, who are also, you know, very interested in this project, and if we can kind of dovetail these, it would be less disruptive to them as well with all the construction that's going on around them. In terms of how we start making these changes throughout downtown prior to construction, I think, I think that would be pretty difficult to do. I think it's going to take the actual construction to then change behavior. I think to try to get people to change behavior and how they use those spaces in absence of the construction is going to be an uphill battle and not something that we could necessarily enforce. I think it's much easier to make that transition when you've got kind of a clean slate to work with. So, you know, I think we would be looking at doing this then as a phased build-out throughout the downtown, first targeting opportunities in conjunction with new construction, and then start moving strategically throughout the downtown over a period of, you know, kind of probably five to six years of rolling it out.
Can it, can it go faster than that?
Possibly, possibly.
I sure would recommend. I want to second Counselor Kaser's comments about it too. I really like the plan. I think the simplicity of it and the clarity of it is really, really good. And I think one of the things that we've all learned is, is time doesn't always work for this kind of a project, and if we can, the faster we move, the more likely we are to have that kind of consistency rather than...
Yeah, well, no more once we start getting into the design and we start learning what sort of complexities we have underground and what sorts of other issues we might be running into when we, you know, start digging things up. And then I think the other part of it that we need to be sensitive to is how much of the downtown we want torn up at any one time.
Right.
You know, so to try to do it all at once, it would just shut down downtown. So we're going to want to be really thoughtful in how we phase those impacts and give us time to work with businesses.
We've, we've done an hour on this. Would you, would you like to keep going for just a couple more minutes and then we'll move on? And I'd stay pretty focused on the landscape. We really did, I mean, poor Fernandez just wandered in here looking for a place to sit. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Cook.
So I, just in talking about future projects and in looking at ADA compliance, motorized scooters, the speed of assist devices, it's come up a couple of times and just scuttlebutt about things like scooters or, how would the streetscape allow for that based on width and use of sidewalk? We're, again, purely talking about pedestrians, and I know downtown we have limits with no roller skating, likely skateboarding on sidewalks. Does this change any of that? How does the streetscape remain flexible depending on what happens in the future with possibly faster walking?
You want to handle motorized scooters? I mean, I think right now we're looking at those being off the sidewalks, that they would be on the street.
So those would all be on the street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious about plan development. Where are we at? Is it, is this pretty much it? Are we, are you still contemplating edits to this thing? Where are we at and what's the timeline?
This is it. So after this, then the next step would be to move this forward for adoption.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to focus a minute on the, on the use of the alleyways. There's a finite amount of space downtown and those seem to be the least used. Is there, first of all, is there a consistency with the width of the alleys in Salem?
There, there's some consistency in terms of the actual alley right-of-way, but in terms of usable space, there's a lot of variation because not all of the buildings are built up to the property line. So some have, off the alleys, a good, is some parking and, you know, privately owned area, but I think through the alleys are fairly consistent in terms of the right-of-way width.
Is there, I'm thinking of cafes and pubs and things like that that would have outside seating, but there would still be room enough for delivery trucks and possibly a way to separate, like create a sidewalk or a level above where people are, but still have enough room for the delivery trucks to go through.
Yeah, so where those areas exist, you see there's some places that have like a little sidewalk. You know, some of the alleys back in the 70s or 80s, we did that where it was possible. But in other areas, yeah, it just won't be possible. I mean, that's, we have what we have, and we still have to, you know, what makes alleys cool is that there's garbage in them. I mean, that's, yeah, there's no other place for, you know, for the garbage cans and for parking and for whatever deliveries happen back there. So it all has to happen within this little space, and the little space still has to allow, I mean, unless there's a special event, that has to allow for, for, you know, everything else to get through. So places like the Victory Club or 1856 have a little room to be able to...
Nine.
Nine, whatever, yeah, whatever. Whatever year the cider was brewed.
Party foul.
Your senior's behind the times.
He just had a birthday.
That makes sense, because you have spaces for people. You know, when Corales went through this, simply putting all of the garbage cans on one side of the alley had a positive effect. It's really what little things can do.
Counselor Anderson.
I certainly echo what Counselor Kaser and the mayor said about this is a good plan. I also agree about alleys. I mean, most of us have probably been to Europe and seen the alleys there, and they're fantastic places. The other thing I would say is that you folks appear to be familiar with Chuck Moran and Strong Towns, and so I'm really in favor of the mid-block landscape areas that you put here. That is a way to slow down. I mean, we can obviously put something at the end that Moran says to do, but you can certainly put something on the side, so I think that's terrific. I also would be very excited about parklets if we're talking about what the future projects would be.
Yeah, I hope that we don't lose the parklets in the parking debate, that we, there really is quite a bit of work on that. I know you have that as a future item, but I think that was one of the real attractive ideas were the parklets, so.
Yeah, and I think there's still a lot of interest in that too. We, because of pending construction, you know, we really wanted to get the base concept moved forward and not have that get held up around any discussion around parking versus landscaping.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you so much. And we really are very, very pleased with this. This really is an excellent place for us, like you say, to build from. I mean, it really gives us a ground to work with, so thank you very much. And take everything you heard, Fernandez, real seriously.
Mayor, before we close the urban renewal area, I would like to express my thanks to the other departments, the technical advisory committee that we had. We had very good participation, very helpful.
Great.
I appreciate their work. And I also want to thank Cherie, who did just a fabulous job project managing this.
Yeah, this has been just really a model of public outreach and really incorporating a lot of really good ideas. So thank you all very much, really appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to then move on to our downtown homeless task force, and if you want to start, Kristin.